They're doing good. We'll call the meeting to order. All three commissioners are present. October seventh, it was properly posted. Prayer and pledge will be led by District One.
Yes, our speaker got stuck in, uh, traffic. I guess there was an accident on my forty, but we have Ryan Jasper here. He's gonna lead us in prayer and also.
Better heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this, another day you've given us on your earth, Lord. Thank you for your Son Jesus Christ came down, gave his life for us, Lord. I ask that you lay your hand on our elected officials on this meeting, Lord, and all our employees, in Jesus' Son's name. Amen. Salute, pledge.
My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, everyty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October first?
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next are the claims. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any individual consideration on the consent document? If not. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, District One.
Alright, good morning commissioners. Uh, item number thirty-seven is, uh, Pocayo Avenue's addendum, adding fifty thousand dollars, increasing the overall amount to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'll, uh, ask for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Yeah, we haven't cleared. You probably need to go back. Okay, yes it is.
Hey, next then.
Okay.
Item number thirty-eight is, uh, for, uh, Live Free.
We need to hold, uh, we haven't voted on thirty-seven.
Yeah, we did. We just did.
Okay, that was me. Okay. Now we're on thirty-eight. Okay.
Alright, uh, Live Free is a, um, addendum for an increase of forty thousand dollars, increasing the overall amount to fifty-five thousand dollars. Ask for approval.
Yes, um, Marilyn Hildreth is here. Do you have a few words?
Yes, thank you very much. We're working diligently in our community to make our community a safer and better place to live. This will help us in our projects dealing with the people within our community that need our help. And what I wanna say is thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, motion to approve.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And congratulations again on your big statue monument down there for your mom and all of your friends with you. It's very nice. Go ahead.
Item number thirty-nine is, uh, for legal aid services. Uh, this is an addendum for an increase of a hundred thousand dollars, increasing the overall amount to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'll ask for approval.
Uh, I wanna talk about, uh, these additional funds to legal aid. Uh, when I, I'm on the sixth floor of the county courthouse, there's large lines, there's a lot of individuals that do not have representation and that are evicted from their homes. Obviously, the weather is about to change. Homelessness is a major problem, not only in Oklahoma County, it's a major problem throughout the state of Oklahoma. So I think that, you know, we need to focus more on homelessness and get people off the street, uh, keep them in their homes. And this additional funding of a hundred thousand dollars is, is not gonna solve the problem, but I think it's, uh, uh, a starting point where we can try to help, uh, ease this, uh, community crisis that's taking place throughout the state of Oklahoma and also in Oklahoma County. So, uh, we're very proud, uh, District One to lead the effort and also for the other commissioners to join in to try to tackle this problem with this homelessness across the state. Uh, motion to approve.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Jared, are you in here? Is there any? Yeah, wanna wait till the end, Marissa, till? For Jared to come in? Okay. Alright, um. Going down to item forty-two, this is, uh, assistance agreement with the city of Nichols Hills for a little road project there. If there are no questions, I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then this is our annual publications list. Uh, this was held from before. I'm just bringing it back. I don't know if there are any additional corrections or substitutions. If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
District Three.
Alright, first one, item forty-four is, uh, fostering sweet dreams. This is, uh, Kimberly's going to take it over from here.
Hi, so fostering sweet dreams, it is an incredible charity. Um, they collect bedding and beds for foster kids, all new. It's a very dehumanizing experience for kids to go into these houses and not have anything of their own. And so there's just an added level of comfort when they have a bed and fresh sheets that are theirs. So I would like to host a drive all of November to kind of incentivize people to donate. Um, I will be donating a gift card of the minimum amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. My goal is to get at least two hundred and fifty items. It will increase one dollar for every additional item that is donated up to five hundred dollars.
This is a great thing. This is a very difficult situation for children that are put into, um, emergency foster homes. And many times that they're, um, taken, they're taken with nothing but a trash bag full of their belongings. They don't have a bed, they don't have sheets, they don't have anything that they're going through. So this is, uh, a gap bill that steps in and provides them with bedding and a bed, you know, safe space, uh, space to sleep, so. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number forty-five.
Sure. Yep, well, we'd like to award ARPA funding for the following organizations, uh, Integris Health Foundation, additional seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Reemerged seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Fifty thousand to Fields and Futures, fifty thou- fifty thousand to Uncommon Ground, fifty thousand to Share Foundation Development Project, and twenty-five thousand to the Hope Center of Edmond, and twenty-five thousand to Peaceful Family Solutions. Um, these are all existing subrecipient accounts. Uh, this accounts for the three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents that the district received for reallocation as well as twenty thousand dollars that's coming back from the rank in YMCA. Uh, we will submit the, uh, addendums to each subrecipient agreement once, um, the updates are made with, with, uh, Daniel.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number forty-six is resolution recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Oklahoma County. And with your indulgence, we'd like to have Anita come up and read the resolution. Anita's got a friend of hers and a friend of mine, uh, Ms. Kelly Newton's gonna read the resolution.
Yeah, actually Kelly's gonna read it for me, cause you know, I don't like to be in public.
She went to law school for three years to learn how to read these types of things.
There you go, there you go.
Hi, I'm Kelly Masters Newton. I'm the legal director at Palomar, and I, um, am here to read Resolution twenty-two-five dash three-nine-zero-four. A resolution recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Oklahoma County. Whereas Oklahoma ranks second in the nation for women killed by men and first in the nation for domestic violence rates. And whereas in Oklahoma, forty-nine point one percent of women in Oklahoma and forty point seven percent of men experience intimate partner, physical violence, intimate partner rape, and/or intimate partner stalking in their lifetime. And whereas Oklahoma, in Oklahoma, one in six homes will make a domestic-related call to nine-one-one. And whereas in Oklahoma County, there are many services and partnerships to provide services to the survivors of domestic violence. And whereas this year in Oklahoma County, the Court Clerk's Office, Rick Warren, and his staff have processed over three thousand VPO filings. And whereas the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office serves the Oklahoma Victim Protective Order paperwork and forcible entry in detainers so that orders can take effect. Until the orders are served, victims have no protection. The Sheriff's Office recently added two more positions to assist in and to provide adequate services to meet the new statutory requirements. The Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office has a deputy dedicated to serve with Palomar. And whereas Oklahoma County Law Library provides a room in the Oklahoma County Courthouse for Palomar to assist survivors every Monday morning from nine AM to one PM. And whereas Oklahoma, whereas Palomar has services for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human stalk- human trafficking, stalking, elder abuse, and child abuse. Palomar has partnered with over forty-five community partner agencies to provide wraparound services to meet the needs of all who come through their doors. And whereas YWCA of Oklahoma City provides safety, education, and hope to victims of domestic violence in our community. YWCA advocates attend all victim protective order dockets in Oklahoma County to assist as needed. YWCA crisis services programs are designed to help break the cycle of violence and provide victims with the empowerment they need to be self-sufficient. And whereas Legal Aid Services of Oklahoma statewide family and domestic violence advocacy have your four family law attorneys that work to serve Oklahoma County. And due to their efforts, at least ten families received lifetime protective orders to protect them from physically and sexually abusive spouses or parents so far this year. Whereas LALU's organization specializes in serving Latino victims of domestic violence, sexual assault and stalking. Their services include advocacy, counseling, support groups. With their services, Oklahoma County is one of the only counties in the state that offer a Spanish interpreter dedicated docket. And now therefore, it is to be resolved that the Board of Oklahoma County Commissioners does hereby declare Oc- October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Oklahoma County. Be it further resolved that the Board of Oklahoma County Commissioners recognize those who serve and assist survivors of domestic violence in Oklahoma County approved this eighth day of October, twenty-two-five.
Thank you, Kelly. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for the work you do.
Anita, you wanna picture?
Yes. Hey, how are you? Can we get in a little closer?
Anita, thanks again for that. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Good morning commissioners. The Assessors Office brings to you this morning a standard contract renewal for CoStar. It is a commercial property service that provides us insight to the commercial market in Oklahoma County for information such as leases, rents, expenses, and sales.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Marissa, this is just a continuation, just a renewal, right? Is there a motion for forty-eight?
Yes, it's just annual renewal for Oklahoma City Abstract.
Okay. I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County management. These are just amendments for ARPA staff.
Forty-nine is for District One. If you wanna take that, Commissioner Lo.
Okay, forty-nine is, good morning commissioners.
That's fine.
Great. Um, forty-nine is, uh, just a change amendment to their budget categories, modifications that were needed to be made for compliance for, um, Eastside Pride Wrestling Club.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And our appointees to the Evaluation Committee for the Behavioral Care.
Correct. These are appointments, um, that have been made, uh, or requesting appointments for, uh, these, uh, individuals to be able to serve on the Evaluation Committee for the Behavioral Care Center RFP. They were also the individuals that, um, dedicated their time to review the RFP before it was sent out to the community, and so, um, we're really grateful for their, um, additional service in regards to helping us make decisions.
Very grateful for these individuals willing to serve. We have some decorated folks here. Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Stacy.
Yeah, item fifty-one, it's at the existing jail. We had a, uh, controller drive go out. Um, well, there's four controllers down there controlling about a quarter of the building, so one of the drives is out. Uh, fortunately, we have a contractor still on site, so he's gonna put this back in service for us for thirty-eight hundred and forty dollars. I'd recommend approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jared, would you care to go now, or do you wanna wait till after executive session? Come on.
Item forty-eight. Uh, forty. Thank you.
Good morning. Zach Robinson would be okay. I've just handed out a summary of the bids. Um, I'd like to start with the rating. Um, the credit rating process is never easy or a sure thing. Uh, your rating, it was affirmed, um, at AA one, which is in a very strong credit rating with Moody's. It is, um, it's a full, your team, uh, they work incredibly hard to secure that from, uh, the Treasurer's Office, uh, Clerk's Office. There's a lot of time and effort on that, and as you can see on this sheet, it really matters on the interest cost that has to be owed on the bond. So I just wanna highlight the credit. Um, in their report, Moody's actually said, your financial performance is a part of this too. So, um, I think that, that you all deserve a lot of credit for the work that you do in terms of your financial operations, and it's reflected here. And I think that, um, it's very crucial to the bond sale. We got seven bids for the bonds, which Jared and I are always kind of hoping for at least three or four. Um, so seven is outstanding. A lot of these firms, as you can see, they're national firms who bid on bonds all the time. They're professional investors, and they looked very, uh, favorably on your bond issue. So B of A Securities was the low bid on a true interest cost scale at three point six seven zero three four nine. Um, w- uh, well below our, our estimates. Some of that, some of that is I'm, I'm conservative. Uh, but some of that is, um, the market moved in our favor just generally since August. But again, your credit score really, really drove that demand for the bonds. And so the, the, the bidders, uh, that, they don't know who's bidding or what they're bidding. It's all just a blind bid. And so they analyze the credit on their own. The size of the bond issue was, was very, uh, attractive to these firms. Um, and again, when you look at the bids, seven bids, but three of them are within, I mean, three sixty-seven, three sixty-eight, three sixty-nine. So that shows us that we absolutely found the market and we got the lowest rate possible on the bonds. Um, as it relates to just to, you know, issuing bonds and bond sales, um, I look at these and I see a huge win for the taxpayers here. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them on the rating, that process, any of the bids. Um, but again, our recommendation would be to award the bonds to the low bid, three point six seven zero three four nine.
Is there a motion to do so?
I have a, a couple of, uh, words on, on this. You know, I'm very excited about our credit rating. That's great news. But I'm, I'm very concerned about the fact that we're moving forward with this jail, um, when we don't have the entire amount of funds to pay for the entire project. And, uh, just for the record, I've expressed this concern before. Uh, you know, when we're moving forward with quote-unquote half of a jail, when we don't have the entire funds to build the entire jail. Once again, I've expressed that I believe that the voters need to decide whether we move forward with the jail or not. If they decide that we need to move forward, we will have enough funds to build the entire jail, and we're done. We have a new jail. That's what the voters want. I'm concerned that the voters might reject this proposal. And now we're gonna have three facilities that we're gonna have to fund. We're gonna have to fund the current jail, behavioral center, and also half of a jail. Where are we gonna get those funds to fund three facilities? We're having difficulties right now funding one jail. Now, two additional sites. What's gonna happen if the voters reject the sales tax, that's probably gonna be on the ballot next year. What's gonna happen is, we're gonna find ourselves in a very difficult situation. And a difficult situation is gonna mean cuts across the board. That's gonna mean jobs lost. This is very concerning. We're, we're putting all of our eggs in one basket. This is very concerning. So the alarm is being set off right now. I'm, I'm letting you all know, this is what I've, I've, today, today's date, I have said this is very concerning. If this vote fails, we are in trouble. So I'm gonna go ahead and vote no. Um, once again, I'm, I'm happy with our credit rating. That shows a lot of progress. But I'm very concerned, and we just need to wait. We need to wait on the voters and, and get their approval, get the funding, and move forward with the jail. But to go ahead and, and do this, I think is very irresponsible.
I just wanna say thanks to the Treasurer and to the Clerk's Office for all your work on this, and the team, Jared and your team. I appreciate it. Be okay. I know there's a lot of work, a lot of work that goes into this moment. This does not come to us without tons of preparation. And I appreciate everybody working to get us the best deal we could get. And my reasoning for moving forward on this is very simple. We gotta do everything we can with what we have, the time we have to do it with. And that includes locking in a savings of approximately at least six million dollars to move forward at this time with fair market value prices already encroaching on us that much. Who knows by the time we got there? And this money that we're spending today is voter-directed. So it was approved by the population of Oklahoma County's voters, and we thank them for their support, and they gave us a charge. It's not gonna be enough. We had hoped it would be closer to enough than at the time we had this passed, but the economy, as you pointed out, has changed in a lot of ways, and so this rate helps us to get more out of this than maybe we had originally thought we were gonna get. Another reason to act now, I think. And, um, I understand your point, Commissioner, about it is alarming if the voters don't agree to help us go ahead and go forward. But, uh, my plea will be for them to help us finish this project in the spring when we put this before them. Is there a motion? If not, I'll move the item to accept this bid.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the companion item here is about the actual issuance of these bonds.
That's exactly right, Commissioner. Uh, good morning. Um, forty-one is the actual resolution authorizing the issuance. Um, we provided, uh, filled out completed copies of that, which will also be uploaded to the Agenda site and everything. Um, but you can see the individual maturity. So when we have that bond sale this morning, we aggregate that, we get, you know, our lowest true interest cost is what we award the bonds based off of. You know, every year that we have a principal maturity, that rate is just ever so slightly different. So that resolution in front of you spells out what that rate is every year based on the low bid from B of A Securities. Happy to answer any questions. Um, timeline from here is we'll get this submitted, um, to the appropriate parties, and we should have funds in the bank on November thirteenth.
Another monumental step in this long, long process.
And I would just all echo everybody's, thank you to all of the commissioners' offices, um, to the manager's office, to the clerk's office, and the treasurer's office for helping us gather all of the very intensive information that we needed to get through this process and to get to today.
Absolutely. I will make a motion for their issuance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, item, uh, I believe.
To approve or motion to move into executive session.
Okay. Is there a second?
What is wrong with this?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you hit your button?
Yep, several times. There you go.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, action on item fifty-four.
Uh, item fifty-four is to enter into settlement for ten thousand dollars.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Okay, this is annoying.
All right, fifty-five.
Motion to proceed to discuss. Oh my god.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion to adjourn.
Second. No, all right. One, one correction. On forty-one, I voted yes, I'd like to reconsider that vote.
Forty-one or forty-two?
Forty-one. I voted yes.
Okay, you voted no on forty, and...
Correct. No on forty-one.
Got it.
How do you do that, Sharon?
Just motion to reconsider. So enter a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider, vote on item forty-one.
Now you need a second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 And then it's a motion to approve on item forty-one. From me. And then there could be a second from anybody.
Are you caught up, Sharon? Okay.
So motion to approve on item forty-one.
Yeah.
I'll hit it again.
Second.
Right.
And there's a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And is there any opposed? Would be opposed?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
All right, motion to adjourn.
No citizens to speak, no board comments. There's a second to the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, are you, where can you do the agenda? Okay, I'll call the PBA together, all three trustees are present, it was posted on October seventh. Is there a motion to approve October one's meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And then this is just some parking contracts?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any citizens, board comments, new business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.